Good evening. I'd like to call the Tuesday, September 19th, 2023, 6:00 PM Meeting to Order. At this time, we were going to have a presentation of the colors. Please rise for that. And we have Cadet Second Lieutenant Tyler Redinger. We have Cadet Second Lieutenant Jenna Sewell. We have Cadet Major Carter Wilson and Cadet Captain Savannah Wilson. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We're going to have a moment of silence. Thank you. The National Anthem? Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call.
Kristi Chong.
Wolfery President.
Sally Hunt.
Cheryl Masaro.
LaShaka Moore.
Okay, we're going down to Special Announcements, Proclamations, Resolutions, and Legislative Updates. I do not believe we have any legislative updates, so we're going down to 2.02 Bullying Prevention Month. Mr. John Finelli.
Good evening, Board Chair Masaro, School Board Members, Superintendent Moore. It's great to see you all. We are here today to speak on bullying prevention. So we know that the safety and security of our students is paramount to everything else that we do here in the district. And I have two of our team members that work hard every day to ensure that our students are safe. I have Ms. Jerry Drayton, who is Supervisor of Transportation. So when those students are on the bus, we make sure that we have seating charts in place, we're separating kids that maybe shouldn't be sitting next to each other, doing everything we can to proactively approach bullying and discipline in our district. And I have one of our newest deans at our district, our Dean Jawan DeDove, who's a dean at Rimfire Elementary School. And again, when they're on campus, we're working hard every day to ensure that every student is safe and that we are taking a proactive approach to bullying. But when we do get reports that bullying is occurring, we're investigating, we're putting interventions and supports in place, and we are disciplining students who are bullying other students on campus. It is not allowed, and it will not be tolerated in Flagler schools. But like I said earlier, we are, of course, taking a preventative approach to this, and I have a resolution that I would like to read into record today. A resolution of the Flagler County School Board recognizing October 2023 as National Bullying Prevention Month in Flagler County. Whereas bullying is physical, verbal, sexual, or emotional harm or intimidation intentionally directed at a person or group of people; and whereas bullying occurs in neighborhoods, playgrounds, schools, and through technology such as the Internet and cell phones; and whereas various researchers have concluded that bullying is the most common form of violence affecting millions of American children and adolescents annually; and whereas targets of bullying are more likely to acquire physical, emotional, and learning problems; and whereas students who are repeatedly bullied often fear such activities as riding the bus, going to school, attending school and community activities; and whereas children who bully are at greater risk of engaging in more serious violent behaviors; and whereas children who witness bullying often feel less secure, more fearful, and intimidated; and whereas the State of Florida and the school district of Flagler County commit their resources to ensure the success of the national theme "Choose Kindness, Acceptance, and Inclusion." Now therefore, be it resolved by the Flagler County School Board that this month of October 2023 is recognized as National Bully Prevention Month. And be it further resolved that Flagler Schools encourages students, parents, and staff of the school district of Flagler County to engage in a variety of awareness and prevention activities designed to make our schools and communities safer for all children and adolescents. Adopted by the members of the Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, at the regular open public board meeting thereof held on this day, September 19th, 2023.
Thank you all. I think there's not a person in this room that doesn't believe how important addressing bullying every day, all the time, is. Thank you.
And we are here just as representations of all faculty and staff across our district that are here to ensure the safety and well-being of our children every day.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Just in case, it is September, and yes, in September, we will always do proclamations for October. So it's already done, as opposed to after the month had already started. So this is now 2.03 Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Presenter I have is John Subers. Can you all just introduce yourselves so everybody knows?
I'm sorry. My name is Tony Papandrea. I am the chairman of Advent Health Foundation, and this is John Subers, our executive director. Little, littler one. Am I to read this?
Yes.
Good luck.
Or somebody there.
I have no glasses.
I'm sure somebody can do that.
John, would you read that?
I will do it.
We'll go, we'll do that. I can't see, and you can't read.
Thank you all very much for allowing us to come in September to start our breast cancer awareness for October. But whereas breast cancer is the most frequently diagnosed cancer in women, in 2022, an estimated 287,850 diagnosis of invasive cancer are expected in women in the United States, along with 51,400 new cases of non-invasive breast cancer. Also about 2,700 new cases of invasive breast cancer are expected to be diagnosed in men this year. Whereas, 1 in 8 women diagnosed with breast cancer have a family history, and 85% have no family history, with an increased incident rate since 1990 being predominantly in women 50 years and older. Whereas, early detection and timing, timely screening mammograms has helped boost the breast cancer survival rate to more than 22.6 million in the United States, also resulting in 40% dead decline in mortality since 1989. Whereas, Flagler Schools, ta-da, has supported, very much so, the local efforts to raise awareness of breast cancer by forming teams of students, teachers, staff to take part in our annual Pink Horn Parade 5K and associated events, as well as providing cheerleaders, color guards, singers to provide supportive environment during the special event. It's really an event to see all the kids. Whereas, Advent Health Palm Coast Foundation, Pink Army, with the support of our community, has raised and distributed over $150,000, helped hundreds of patients, and performed 1,000 procedures in direct report of Flagler County men and women battling breast cancer. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Flagler County School Board that October 2023 is Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Flagler County, and be it further resolved that Flagler Schools encourages all citizens to join our breast cancer awareness campaign by encouraging all women to receive breast cancer screenings, actively educate others concerning the importance of early screening, and raise the pink flag against breast cancer. Adopted by the members of the Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, in a regular open public meeting therefore held on today of September 2023. Thank you all very much for this recognition.
Thank you for reading this so well, too.
You did good. Superintendent Chair and Board Members, first, I'd like to thank the Flagler County Schools and all the children who participate and help us during the month of October and all year for what they do. We're going to turn Flagler County, here he goes, we're going to turn it pink in October. And we have so many events scheduled, and we'd encourage you to come to our October 8th Pink Army 5K. We have 1,000 people coming. Everyone who participates, except you all, will get one of these participant medals, and we hope to have you there. Just a little add-on to what that proclamation says. Our foundation, since inception, has helped 597 women through 995 screenings, diagnostics, and surgeries. And the key, we couldn't say this 10 years ago, but we can cure breast cancer. And the secret is early detection, and the only way you get early detection is go get your mammograms. So I encourage you all to do that, spread the word, and we thank you very much for the proclamation. Come see us, we'll make you proud.
Thank you, gentlemen. We really appreciate your support.
And we truly appreciate Angela Dawson. She has gone out of, really done a tremendous job of getting the schools engaged with us in so many different levels. So thank you so much.
All right. Okay. Now we're up to 2.04 Disability History and Awareness Weeks presenter, Ms. Kim Halliday.
Good evening, Board, Chair, Superintendent Moore. Mr. Lang and I are together going to talk with you a little bit about Disability History and Awareness Month. But I do want to let you know, Kim Halliday, that is my name. I'm the very, very proud Director of Exceptional Student Education for Flagler County Schools. We have two events coming up in October. We have Disability History and Awareness Week, which is the first two weeks in October that we're going to read to you. And we also have Disability Employment Awareness Month, that I'm going to bring our transition team up, some of the members, to talk with you a little bit about that. So be on the lookout for some videos that will be coming soon to an email near you on some things happening in Flagler schools.
You go first, and then we'll just wind the line.
A resolution of the Flagler County School Board recognizes Disability History and Awareness Week in Flagler County.
Whereas in 2008, the Florida Legislature designated the first two weeks of October as Disability History and Awareness Weeks in public schools K-12, and...
Whereas the goals of disability, history, and awareness instruction include recognizing the abilities of all students, and...
Whereas the recognition results in a better treatment of individuals with disabilities in society, especially youth in school, and...
Whereas encouraging individuals with disabilities to increase their self-esteem results in more of them gaining pride in their abilities, obtaining post-secondary education, entering the workforce, and contributing to their communities, and...
Whereas Flagler Schools reaffirms its commitment to the full inclusion of and equal opportunities for all individuals with disabilities, and...
Whereas observing Disability History and Awareness Week allows us to appreciate the accomplishments of our students with disabilities, their parents, their teachers, and staff in Flagler Schools.
Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Flagler County School Board, the first two weeks of October 2023, Disability History and Awareness Week.
Adopted by the members of the Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, at the regular open public meeting thereof held on the 19th day of September 2023. Thank you, Mr. Lang, for having me.
Thank you both.
If our transition team can come up?
Okay, so we're moving right on to Disability Employment Awareness Month with Ms. Halliday.
Good evening. My name is Abrams Nakras, and I'm the Transition Specialist, and I have a bunch of members here, and they are going to help me read the proclamation. And go ahead and tell them.
My name is Marshall Potts. My name is Marshall Potts. How's it going?
It's going great, Marshall.
My name is Alex Torres.
My name is Nija Christopher.
My name is Jacob Ward.
I am Lizette Sanchez, a transition teacher.
Hi, I'm Jill Colwick, our Project Search Instructor.
A resolution of the Flagler County School Board recognizing October 2023 as Disability Employment Awareness Month in Flagler County. Whereas in 1988, Congress declared the month of October as National Disability Employment Awareness Month to recognize the contributions made by individuals with disabilities, and...
Whereas is the diverse workforce created the community for opportunity for the growth and help towards building a strong economy for our city, and...
Whereas our residents with disabilities deserves the right to live independently, enjoy self-determination, and treat equally, the works places, and...
Whereas the Able Trust, also known as the Florida Endowment Foundation for Vocational Rehabilitation, has worked with employers and community organizations throughout the state, including the Flagler County School District, to enable thousands of Florida citizens with disabilities to enter their workforce, and... Whereas Florida's Division of Vocational Rehabilitation and Division of Blind Services within the Department of Education assists people with disabilities so they may become employed, and...
Whereas Flagler Schools has seen an overwhelming impact on the lives of many Florida citizens with disabilities by offering services including job placement assistance, training, supportive services, and job coaching, and... Whereas Flagler Schools joins the rest of Florida in recognizing the contributions of 2. million Floridians with disabilities by celebrating October 2023 as Disability Employment Awareness Month.
Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Flagler County School Board, the month of October 2023 as Disability Employment Awareness Month. Adopted by the members of Flagler County School Board, Flagler County, Florida, at the regular open public meeting thereof held on today, 19th day of September 2023.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. We have all stars here, gang. Your students are great. Your transition instruction is awesome, and we need you in Flagler County. So keep working hard.
Thank you all for the opportunity to share. We appreciate it.
Okay. All right, spotlights. We're going to start with a very important thing to the school board, and that is the introduction of our new school board members. At this time, I would ask Ms. Bozeman and Mr. Bossardet to come to the front here and bring their students so we can have them seated at the dais.
Good evening, Board, Superintendent Moore. My name is Bobby Bossardet. I am the proud principal of Flagler Palm Coast High School, and I have the privilege of introducing you to our FPC Student School Board Representative, Mr. Brendan Wang. Brendan is a phenomenal student and is committed to several extracurricular programs, both in and out of school. He exemplifies what it means to be an FPC Bulldog. Brendan is a senior in our IB program and has already been awarded the title of AP Scholar for his scores on recent AP exams. His most recent SAT was a 1530, and he was recently recognized as a College Board National Rural and Small Town Scholar. Outside of the classroom, Brendan is active in future problem solving, with his projects routinely placing at the state and international levels. Brendan is also active in our Air Force JROTC detachment, and his leadership and academic bowl team was a national finalist. Brendan also competed in the UNF Med Nexus Challenge when his team took home the Audience Choice Award. Brendan also stays busy with his membership in the FPC National Honor Society Red Cross Club and Mu Alpha Theta Chapter. Brendan has previously competed as a varsity tennis player for FPC, and outside of school, he's an accomplished bridge player. Last summer, he won first place in the North American Youth Bridge Championship. Brendan also worked to develop his leadership skills. He was one of only 70 high schoolers selected to the Four Star Leadership Conference with Four Star General Tommy Franks. It is an honor and a privilege to have him representing FPC, and I'm super excited about the year that he has before him. I'm going to present him with his green, traditional green jacket, and give Brendan a round of applause, everybody.
I'm going to ask that the two of you just stay up here so we can get the Matanzas nominee here, and then we can have a picture.
Good evening, Superintendent Moore and School Board Members. I am so pleased and excited to introduce you to the Matanzas High School Student School Board Representative for the 23-24 school year, Stanley Gatzick. Stanley has been a Flagler Schools student since second grade, and attended Benell Elementary, Indian Trails Middle School, and now Matanzas High School. Stanley has already earned his ACE diploma with merit and is currently an ACE and dual enrollment student who will earn his AA from Daytona State College upon graduation from Matanzas in May. Stanley is ranked first in his class academically with a 5.4 weighted GPA. Stanley's academic achievements are impressive, however, I selected him because he stands out as a model of leadership and character. Stanley is the president of our National Honor Society and serves as our senior class treasurer, and is also involved with our Flagler Youth Orchestra for many years where he plays double bass. Stanley is a lifelong Boy Scout. He's currently working on his Eagle Scout project, where he is constructing a structure at the Flagler Humane Society to improve the quality of life for livestock and other farm animals which are rescued by the society. He is a ViStar intern at our school, meaning he actually has a paid job working both at our Matanzas High School branch of ViStar, as well as at the Palm Coast Parkway branch of ViStar. When I met with Stanley to interview him for this position, he spoke about how he tries to model our MHS motto of "Make good choices, hold yourself accountable, and strive for excellence." I can say that I've witnessed this in Stanley on a daily basis. He is helpful, friendly, cheerful, respectful, and kind, and is a natural leader among his peers. I'm proud to introduce him as a representative of the students of Matanzas High School and Flagler Schools. Thank you.
Okay, can we all come up to the front here and have a photo? All right, congratulations, gentlemen. Would you please go around the side, and the last two chairs are yours.
Stanley has a little get free ball, too.
Wow. Wow, that's very appropriate for living here in Flagler County. We will, we will. Thank you, sir.
Welcome. Great.
I don't, I'm sure the rest of the board is very excited, but I am extremely excited. This is my third year on this board, and it is the first year we have two male students. I know. I know Mr. Ferry's very excited, because it probably breaks up the group up here. So, gentlemen, congratulations. We're very proud to have you. I look forward to working with you with the teen town halls, virtual teen town halls, which I'll get you information later, but enjoy this experience, because I think it's going to be enlightening. So thank you for serving. Okay. We're going to go down now to the Superintendent Strategic Spotlight. I believe Ms. Moore and Ms. Rizzo are presenting here.
Ms. Rizzo will be coming up next for 3.03. I want to actually take this time to spotlight Goal One of Academics, and I am going to spotlight testing, which is not something that we often celebrate. But because of the changes that have been made with our progress monitoring tool and the frequency of how often our students take it, which is three times a year, as of today, we have 115 students that satisfied their grade 10 retake as of right now. That is something that our students would have had to wait to find out. They would have had to wait in order to take it. And because of this change, right now, we have 115 students that did not previously meet that requirement, that have now made it that requirement as of this first testing window. Of course, that does not include all of our students who have already met that requirement. So that is great news for that students, and really celebrates and showcases the reason why testing has been changed in order to allow for a more frequent progress monitoring. We also had 10 students that were retained in third grade, but because, again, of their frequency of our progress monitoring, 10 students that have today met the requirements and score high enough to be promoted to fourth grade this year. And so, again, that is something that would have been delayed. It would have been a mid-year promotion that would not have been made available to our students at this date. And so that may, these two items may seem like small things, but it is huge in the life of these 125 students that will benefit from this change. And so, want to celebrate our students and all of their hard work as they continue to work towards demonstrating and showcasing their grade level proficiency. Thank you.
All right. We're going on to 3.03, the Flagler County Ed Foundation Spotlight. Ms. Rizzo.
Good evening, Board and Superintendent. Thank you for allowing us to share some wonderful news with you this evening. But before I go into what I have scripted, I already have chills tonight, because the transition team that was up here earlier is very important to our education foundation, because our stuff bus would not function without them. They run our warehouse, they take orders, they take inventory, they organize, and they ship out to the schools. So I just wanted to give a shout out to them, and also to Mr. Brendan Wang, who is a very special part of the education foundation as one of our Take Stock in Children students. We're very proud. We're very proud to see you sitting up there, and congratulations, congratulations to you as well. That's incredible. So, as we spoke earlier in the workshop this afternoon about preparing our students for workforce-ready in our local industries, tonight, the Flagler County Education Foundation would like to recognize and thank a few of our local partners in providing financial support to Flagler Schools, students, staff, and families. I'm honored to introduce one of our most valued community partners, that is Market President for Truist Bank for Volusia in Flagler County, Mr. Robert Loudoh.
I'm very thankful to be here, and, you know, we are supporting education for the last 29 years. I've been at the bank now 29 years in Volusian Flagler. That's an odd thing in banking today. And I don't know if you know of Truist. You know, Truist is the combination of Sunbank and BB&amp;T. And when you combine those two institutions, we've been here for 45 years. Most people don't realize that. We have over $3 billion in deposits. So, the foundation money that we give back to the students of Flagler County comes right from the people that work here and from our, you know, constituents, I guess you would say, that live in Flagler County, and we're just so thankful. I myself am the past president of the Volusia Futures Foundation. So, when Teresa came with a foundation grant, I turned around and went, wait a second. I talked to Greg Davis, and I was on my way to making sure that we supported the growth of workforce development, again, workforce development being a very important factor. Our bank tries to inspire and build better communities because they're the next people that bank with us, right? So, in the broader sense, you know, we really appreciate what you guys do because I've been to a lot of school board meetings, and what you do to support our teachers and our children is well worth everything. So, the last thing I want to make sure we say is getting us integrated into Take Stock. I mean, seeing Take Stock students up here and having students on the dais with you is awesome. And congratulations to you young folks because my grade point average definitely wasn't 5.6 or whatever it was, and I'm still a banker and the market president of two counties. So, it's okay. Just keep working hard and keep moving forward. And, you know, I'm representing all the employees that work here, too, for Truist. I mean, they're the people that live and work in your community, and there's 50 in Flagler that work in our bank and 250 in Volusian Flagler. So, you know, we're appreciative of what you do for our schools. So, thank you. Teresa, thank you for letting me come up and talk a little bit about the Truist partnership with the education foundation.
Thank you. Thank Mr. Loudoh, and Truist thanks for their incredible support of the foundation and, of course, Flagler Schools. Next, I'd like to thank and recognize Florida Power and Light. The education foundation has been graciously awarded the FPL Empowering STEM Educators Grant for peer-to-peer professional learning for our science teachers here in Flagler County. The education foundation, in collaboration with the Florida Consortium of Education Foundations, is happy to present Heidi Alves, Flagler Schools Science Curriculum Specialist, with a check of $11,024 to facilitate this amazing opportunity for our science teachers in Flagler County to elevate their science instruction in their classrooms.
Thank you so much. Well, this is the second time we've received this grant, and I can't say enough amazing things about our program that we're planning. It's to have teachers teaching teachers, which is the best thing. We have amazing educators here in Flagler. So, we are putting on an event where teachers will be showing off their craft and teaching other teachers, and they receive science materials that they can walk right out of the event and go right back to their classrooms. And we're also incorporating some classroom walkthroughs and some learning walks along with it, so it's going to be great. And it is for teachers grades four through eight. So, excited about it. It'll be in February.
Excellent, excellent.
Thank you. Yeah. I asked if I could take it home, and they said no, but it's okay.
We'll get you a smaller one to take home. How about that?
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And last, but certainly not least, the foundation is beyond thrilled to announce that along with our community partners, Advent Health, the Florida Consortium of Education Foundations, we were granted the Florida Department of Education's Resiliency Through Community Partners Grant in the amount of $190,000 to provide Flagler students clinical mental health services. This grant will allow the Flagler Schools' mental health team the opportunity to expedite mental health services to our students, directly impacting those who are struggling, and provide them with the tools they need to be resilient. So, we would like to present Marquez Jackson, Director of Flagler Schools Student Services, and Brandy Williams, Flagler Schools' Mental Health Coordinator, with a check to make this happen for Flagler students.
Yeah, I'd be grateful to say a couple of things. So, thank you so much for putting this together for us. This is definitely support services that all of our students and families get to get immediate and direct care. So, these are services that are going directly to our students, and it can't happen without the funding of a grant like this. So, thank you.
Again, I echo Ms. Williams' sentiment. We are extremely excited, so thank you again to Ms. Rizzo, to Ed Foundation and partners. And we've already had exciting conversations around our plans, so we are very excited to be able to bring that to the board at a later time with ways to be able to directly support our students. So, thank you again.
You know, can we get a picture? I think this is an opportunity for a picture. Yes, Ms. Alves, come on in. There we go.
This is big for science.
That's good.
Here we go. One, two, three.
Thank you all.
Thank you all for letting us take a few minutes of your time tonight.
All right, that's great news. We always like getting money, lots of money. That helps. Okay. We're going on 3.04 Civic Seal Recognition Spotlight, Amy Fer.
Good evening, Chair, Board, and Superintendent Moore, and happy belated Constitution Day. I am so excited to be here tonight to recognize our amazing Flagler Schools educators who have completed the Civic Seal of Excellence course. This course was released in January, and 13 cohorts have completed the coursework as of August 31st. In this time period, Flagler Schools has had 118 educators complete the course. This accounts for about 12% of our instructional personnel. This is a 55-hour college-level course that is aligned to the revised civics and government academic standards. Teachers completed, teachers who completed the course were eligible for the Civic Seal of Excellence endorsement add-on, 60 professional learning points, and a $3,000 stipend from the state. Educators who are in attendance, when I call your school's name, please come up to the front to be recognized and stay up here. We will take a photo after. Starting with Benell Elementary School, a whopping 33 educators completed this course.
Come on down, Benell.
Belter Elementary School, 22 educators.
Come on, Donna. Come on.
Old Kings Elementary School, a total of 10 educators. Come on, you guys stand in front of kids all day. You can do this. Rimfire Elementary School, a total of 10 educators. Wadsworth Elementary School, one teacher, Ms. Acey. Buddy Taylor Middle School, a total of 11 educators. Indian Trails Middle School, a total of eight educators, including one very proud principal. Flagler Palm Coast High School, a total of 13 educators. Matanzas High School, a total of 10 educators. The Government Services Building, three educators. I Flagler, one teacher, and Imagine Schools, one teacher.
Can I have one coming up here? All right, wait. There we go.
Thank you so much to all of the educators who participated in the completion of the Civic Seal of Excellence course. We appreciate all you do to move Flagler forward by elevating civic literacy and education for all of our students. Thank you.
Okay, we need a picture here, so.
Here we go, and one, two, three. Very much congratulations.
Thank you all. Congratulations. Okay. Approval of minutes. We have already reviewed these, so I would ask for a motion from the group.
Move approval?
Okay, Mr. Ferry and a second.
Second.
Ms. Chong. So, I have a motion for Mr. Ferry and a second from Ms. Chong to approve 401, 402, 403, and 404. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. Okay, we have now five addition, adoption of agenda. Any additions or changes to the agenda, Superintendent?
Yes, we are pulling item 19.01, and that will be brought back to you at a later date. That was at the request of the individual because they were unable to make it today.
Okay, so 1901 has been pulled. Any other changes?
Chair Masaro.
Excuse me, yes.
Is it possible this evening to pull 9.11 out of consent?
9.11, we can talk about that separately. Is that what you'd like? Talk about it separately?
Yes, please.
Okay, that's fine. We can do that. All right. Okay. We pulled that. We're on public comment. Now, we're open to public comment on any items that are in the agenda. So, if you had signed up for public comment, it would need to be an agenda item. Ms. Gavin, do we have public comment?
Your first speaker is Diane Odom regarding Donnell Evinson.
Ms. Odom.
All right, you already introduced me, so I just say what I want to say?
Yep.
Okay. It was sooner than I was expecting. Okay, this is a letter that I wrote to Lushakia Moore. I'm going to read it to you. Dear Mrs. Moore, first, congratulations on being made permanent superintendent of schools. From what I have learned, you are doing an excellent job. I'm a retired teacher from Flagler County Schools. I taught reading, language arts, and special ed. My son attended Benell Elementary. As a former reading teacher, I know there is great pressure from the state for test scores to be certain levels. I know the school grade is very, very important. I know the first few weeks of school, the school year, are crazy busy for teachers and administrators. Donnell Evinson wants what is best at Benell Elementary for all the students, teachers, and staff. She wants the school test scores to be better. I know Donnell Evinson has a heart for the kids and loves them. The kids know she loves them. Being in the new position of principal, Donnell had many decisions and issues to address quickly those first few weeks. She was assisted by former principal Marcus Sanford-Labo. Donnell was approached by a teacher with a suggestion to do some things to motivate the lower test score students. She and Marcus thought it was a good idea, she described, as described. Apparently, the teacher didn't check the test scores of the students before calling them out to attend the motivational assembly. They knew most of the low scores in that grade were with the black kids in that certain grades. The teachers who gave the motivational assembly called out all the black students in that grade instead of only calling out low test scores regardless of race. Not good. Also, the teachers did not stick to the approved script. Once the word racist was called, the press came in like sharks in a feeding frenzy, and things got exaggerated quickly. Pressure on you, Mrs. Moore, and all those involved quickly escalated. But you know and I know, Donnell is not racist. She wants what is best for all the students at Benell Elementary School. I don't know if Marcus or the teachers' jobs are in jeopardy, but I do know that. Donnell was an excellent teacher and voted Teacher of the Year. Donnell was an excellent Assistant Principal and voted Assistant Principal of the Year and is still reigning in that honor. Donnell will be an excellent principal at Benell Elementary if allowed to stay in that position. And I sign this. And my main concern is the lack of support for this highly honored woman, this lack of support which negatively affects every educator in this county. She has been bullied but received no support because of fear of the media, fear of harming personal career advancements, fear of the word racist. I petition the Board to not accept Donnell Evinson's resignation, and I pray for you all to stand up for what is right. Thank you.
We're not to have any clapping. You're supposed to wave your hands. This is positive, okay? But no clapping. All right.
Board, I would like to clarify, this is an item that is on the agenda. The next speaker is Paula Wilburn on Ms. Evinson.
Wait a second.
I'm sorry.
Who is it?
Paula Wilburn.
I'm sorry.
Paula Wilburn.
I should have.
Paula Wilburn. You're coming.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent Moore and Board, for just allowing me to say a couple words. I thought I wasn't going to be emotional, but not to do that. Donnell Evinson is a huge asset to this district, and I believe that all of you know that by her experience here. All of the things that have happened in the first couple of weeks of school are extremely unfortunate, but it's my opinion, and only my opinion, but hopefully that of others, that does not warrant someone losing the position that they've worked for for 18 years. And I just appeal to you to reject her, Donnell's resignation. This is extremely personal. Because she's my firstborn child. And her dreams-
And her dreams have been crushed to serve this community. She cares so much about the students of Benella. She's always been the first to be on campus and the last to leave. She sacrificed time with her own family to make sure what the kids at Benella needed, they got. She fought for them. She won a $3 million grant for this district. That's huge. There has never been a grant awarded to this district of that size. And 1 million of that is staying right there in Benella. And her dream was to see it to completion of what she wanted to see happen for Benella Elementary. And I hate to see all of the children of Benella Elementary suffer because of an error in judgment, a small mistake. And for someone who has never had any disciplinary action against her other than a spanking when she was little, I mean even all through school, she never had any disciplinary action against her and hasn't in her 18 years of serving Flagler County. And I hope that you'll respectfully think about it.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Charlene Cawthorn regarding Donnell Evenson.
Good evening, I'm Reverend Charlene Cawthorn, President of the Evidence Ministry, Inc., and I often introduce my record of my past as a way to qualify my experience and topics such as come up before this board. I am formally a card-carrying member of the Human Rights Campaign, National Gay and Lesbian Task Force, published and internationally distributed gay and lesbian magazine for black people. And I know what I'm talking about. I made a 180-degree turn toward Jesus Christ over 16 years ago. I am an ex-gay preacher. I've come to express my outrage, along with folks I've heard tonight, at the results of your investigation of Benella Elementary School's principal and a teacher, a couple of teachers. The board, I believe, in my own humble opinion, should be ashamed for forcing out of Mrs. Everson of her job, an incredible principal at Benella Elementary School. Mrs. Everson, if you are listening, I want to apologize to you on behalf of black parents in this community who know that you have done nothing wrong. I must also apologize on behalf of black mentors and parents of Flagler County to an awesome teacher in Anthony Hines. I want you to know that it is my opinion that because of the hidden agenda of the powers that control this entire board, black students will no longer have access to Benella Elementary, at Benella Elementary, to your mentoring programs and to this amazing principal, which are clearly designed to uplift and inspire and, yes, challenge, black students. So what, we can gather students to inspire them, but we can't gather students to challenge them? That's ridiculous. The investigation, the small part of it that I read, determined that Mrs. Everson and Mr. Hines were found guilty of following, found guilty of these violations, harassing and discriminating against students. That's ridiculous because of, on the basis of race. Exposing students to unnecessary embarrassment, not making reasonable effort to protect students from conditions harmful to learning and/or students' mental or physical health, as if this board's policies haven't already done the same. If what this investigation has done is harassing and discriminating, then Juneteenth is harassing and discriminating. If what this board has done is harassing and discriminating, then Black History Month is harassing and discriminating. Then the African-American Cultural Society Youth Program is discriminating. Why? Because they're all solely based on race. Black parents know that it takes a village to raise a child. But what they may not realize in this community is that the village schoolhouse has been taken over by the homosexual politician, their allies, and those with no backbone to stand up to them.
Chair Masaro, this is not appropriate.
If you turn off my mic, you might be talking to my attorney. Let's talk about Flagler's coordinated and communications person.
Ms. Cawthorn, your time is up. Your time is up, Ms. Cawthorn. Ms. Cawthorn, your time is up. Your time is up, I don't want to ask you to leave, I would appreciate it if you would sit down.
Okay. Chair Masaro, that concludes the public comments that are on the agenda items before this board this evening.
Okay, that is fine. Now, we're going to seven, resources. Many of these will be passed quickly, I don't want you to think we're not doing our job. We already workshopped each and every one of these items.
Chair Masaro, agenda item, I just want for clarification of parliamentary procedures. 9.11 will become 1601 for action. Therefore, all of your consents, 901 through 910, can be approved in one fell swoop.
Let me go down here.
And you are taking all of your consent together, it would then be 1101 to 1105, and those can all be approved in addition to your 701 through 707, so it would be 701.
I'll take them one group at a time, just in case there's any conversation. Okay? All right, so we're going to go to resources and support consent, 701 through 707. Are there any, first, I need a motion.
Move approval.
All right, Ms. Chong, a second.
A second.
Ms. Hunt. Okay, we have a motion on floor to approve those, are there any questions or concerns? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. All right, we're going down now to consent nine, academic services. This would be 901 through 910. 901 through 910. I need a motion.
Move approval.
Mr. Ferry, a second.
Second.
Ms. Chong. All right, I have a motion from Mr. Ferry and a second from Ms. Chong to pass 901 through 910. Is there any conversation? Seeing and hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. All right, we're going down now to humans, resources, and services consent. It's 1101 through 1105. I need a motion.
Move approval.
Okay, Ms. Hunt, a second.
Second.
And Mr. Ferry. I have a motion by Ms. Hunt, a second by Mr. Ferry, to accept 1101 through 1105. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously. All right, we're going now to academic services 16. Okay, it is now 1601, which was originally 911, the special audit of the FYO Strings Program with the presenter of Ms. Patty Warmack.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, and Superintendent Moore. I am here to present the FYO Agreed Upon Procedures Report. This was gone over in detail with the audit partner of James Moore Company, who oversaw this audit. So I think at this time, if I could just take some questions or concerns.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for pulling this out of consent, and thank you, Patty. I, to be honest, this is really just, pulling this out of consent was from a place of a few different things. One, we spent a lot of money as a district to do this audit. Secondly, my opinion is when this was discussed, there was, I don't think there was an environment where school board members could really discuss this openly. If there was a little bit of hostility, and, you know, there were some things that were discussed in this by way of a bank account that was not part of audits. We had some conflict of interest with one instance, and then we had a case where we didn't have a background check done for someone who was with our students. And so my question is just, Patty, because I don't know that we were able to kind of fully talk about this, I just wanted to check in with you, also for the benefit of the public. Is there anything more, in your opinion, the board needs to do by way of policy or any more discussion to make sure that some of these things that happened, albeit many, some many years ago? Is there anything more that needs to be done on this, or do any other board members have any more discussion on this? I'm ready to, I'm ready to move on, and I just, I felt like this was a big enough thing that I wanted to make sure we're ready to close it out.
Sure, no, that's a, that's a great question. Just to give you some insight, this bank account is now under the control of the school district. Myself and the Director of Finance are the only two signers on it. That will change to bring one of the signers under teaching and learning, which would be Mr. Reeves, as it does fall under TNL. The, the staff, my staff person who handles the internal accounts is the one who implements the trainings. Superintendent Moore has just recently discussed with me about making sure that we do an ongoing training for internal account bookkeepers, even if they've been here for a prolonged period of time. During the year, we usually do at least three trainings for our normal bookkeepers, and so it was a great recommendation by our superintendents to make sure that we have that internal training going on for the internal as well. Because when those bookkeepers change over in the elementary and the middle school, they do handle both the district and the internal. So I have spoken to my director, she's going to make sure that we start that very soon now that we're out of our busy season, school's gotten up and running. So we will be having our first internal training, hopefully within the next month. And I strive to do that at least twice a year. I do feel that we have our internal controls and procedures in place for our internal accounts. You'll be seeing our internal accounts audit for all of the accounts come up, probably at the next board meeting. We just received the draft. I will tell you that it is much cleaner than last year, which is a testament to the internal controls that we have put in place and, and the strides that we made to make sure that the previous year's comments were taken care of. So I feel from the finance perspective, as far as controls, we have done what we needed to do. I do have one of my staff working with Board Attorney Gavin as far as sending out email and some communication to make sure that we don't fall into this situation again, sending out some communication to schools and various departments that if you have this type of an account, make sure that you send us your bank information so we can make sure that it's being properly filed. So we have tried to close those loopholes, and I do feel that we are in a decent place. Keep in mind, this was orchestrated under a superintendent, five, six superintendents ago.
Are there any additional questions?
I just want to clarify for the public also, because there's been a lot of misinformation put out there regarding this audit, especially with regards to the cost of doing this, and some people have put out there that this was sort of a targeted investigation, that this effort ended up costing the district X amount of dollars. But this was an internal account that, irregardless of this, once we learned about it, it's my understanding that we were obligated to have an audit of this account.
When we first learned of this account, being in the school district's EIN number, we did seek out to our public auditors, who do audit our internal accounts, as to their recommendation as to how to handle this. In conjunction with our then-superintendent and with the advice of our external auditors, it was determined that we should at least do a three-year transactional audit, 100%. And if there were substantial concerns, then we would talk about going further back. What we have found were that the procedures have been pretty routine. Did they exactly follow all of the processes and requirements of the red book? No. However that being stated, the person who was overseeing it wasn't provided that information years ago under then-superintendent. So in following up with the auditors after this report was issued, it was determined that leaving this report alone, going forward, auditing the 22, 23 accounts with our normal internal accounts, which they have done, and as I mentioned earlier, is in draft form, is pretty sufficient as long as the board feels, you know, pretty good about these findings.
Very good, so ultimately, I just want to highlight that this was just about truth and transparency. And in the wake of all this here, I just want to reassure the public that also the Flagler Youth Orchestra is alive and well. It is now under, it is in-house now rather than an external program and is under teaching and learning. So ultimately, this is further strengthened the program. We've also hired new directors for this program as well, and it has been fully funded with a unanimous vote by the board. So I just want to reassure that from my district too, see, and the board is, can speak for themselves, but overall, the vote has shown that we fully support this program and will continue to encourage keeping this program going as long as it has value to our students and our community.
All right, go ahead.
Just say thank you, Patty, I know it's been a lot of hard work for you, so.
Thank you, Ms. Chong.
We appreciate everything you've done.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, well then, I need a motion to pass 1601, 911, special audit for the FYO Strings Program.
Move approval.
Okay, Ms. Chong, a second.
Second.
Mr. Ferry. All right, we have a motion and a second to pass 1601, 911, which is special audit FYO Strings Program. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're on 17, operational services with action, 1701, proportionate share agreement, the Whiteview multifamily apartment complex. Mr. Whitson. Oh, not Mr. Whitson, Mr. Freeman.
There we go, good evening, Board, Madam Chair, Superintendent Moore. As this proportionate share mitigation agreement was brought to the board this afternoon at the workshop, this is a 316 multifamily apartment complex located on Whiteview Parkway and White Mill Drive. It's in the development, will generate approximately, will generate 19 student stations, nine at the elementary level, six at middle school, and four at high school. And this agreement, we are recommending approval from the board.
I need a motion.
Move approval.
Ms. Hunt, a second.
Second.
Mr. Ferry. All right, we have a first and we have a second. Any conversation? Hearing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, 1901 was pulled from the agenda, so we're now on 20. School Board Attorney Action 2001, the 2023 policy updates to reflect changes from 2023 legislative session. Presenter, Ms. Gavin.
Thank you, Chair Masaro, Board members. I presented to you this afternoon, this is for advertising purposes only, the various policies that need to be updated based upon the legislative session that ended, and the governor signed those legislative acts into statute. And we also have been receiving from the Florida Department of Education several administrative rules that then interpret how we are to draft our policies. So I have before you revisions to our safe and secure schools policy, our instructional materials policy, our media materials policy, report of misconduct policy, our zero tolerance for school-related crimes policy, our administration of medication policy, student records policy, the emergency drills policy, children of military families policy, our new policies being proposed of artificial intelligence acceptance policy, drone policy, and also our internet safety policy. Those will be advertised in the newspaper as well as on notifications sent out to our staff and administrators of school-based administration and district-based administration for comment, in addition to if you, as board members, have any comments regarding changes in the language that is currently drafted and proposed.
All right, so we need a motion to advertise.
Move approval.
Okay, that's Mr. Ferry, a second.
Second.
Ms. Chong. Any conversation? Hearing none, then, we have a motion for Mr. Ferry. Hearing none then, we have a motion from Mr. Ferry and a second by Ms. Chung to approve advertising the 2023 policy updates that reflect the changes of the 2023 legislative session. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Okay, we're on to 2002, the Attorney's Contract Review. We had quite a conversation earlier this morning, this afternoon, so we are actually opening this up for a motion.
Okay. The motion is, I would like to appoint Board Member Will Ferry to seek outside legal counsel on our options regarding our attorney's contract and coming to a mutual agreement.
And I need a second.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion to, to appoint Mr. Ferry to seek outside counsel for explanation of our contract for our school board attorney. Any other further conversation? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Okay. We are now on to old business, is there any?
Chair Masaro, I'm so sorry.
Yes, Ms. Hunt.
Before we move on, just being mindful of board procedure, I, I think we discussed earlier today that we would perhaps have a special meeting if necessary based on what Mr. Ferry will be facilitating. Is it possible to get consensus tonight to add, add that formally if needed to the next business meeting, just so that we are getting consensus tonight? Again, we might have a special meeting earlier than the next business meeting, but I would appreciate.
A special meeting or just on the agenda? That's where I'm confused.
So in the workshop today, we had discussed, you know, whether it is, I think we had discussed when would we talk about this topic, this action item. And it, it could potentially be a special meeting, but it may, we may find that it needs to be on the next business meeting agenda. So while we are all in session, I'm just wondering if we should check consensus to see if there's agreement to have this formally on the next business meeting.
I, I think we did. Yeah, I think we did because.
Do we need to do that officially in this meeting?
No, I don't think so, because we had consensus at the last meeting for 10-3 for Mr. Ferry to report where we stand and if we, where we need, and then we will go from there, so we can prepare for the 10-19 meeting or 10?
17.
10, 17, 17 meeting. So I believe we did, we did have a consensus on that earlier. Am I correct?
Well, it's my understanding that for the 10-3, I would be reporting on whatever status we're at. So if, if I'm able to secure an attorney beforehand and we're able to get our questions in, then we, we may be able to review the, the opinions at that point. If we haven't, then it would be the, the status of where we're at. Ms. Hunt, are you, are you saying you'd want to have this already on the, as an action item on the business meeting that?
Yeah, and just for full transparency, since being sworn into office, as I've tried to kind of navigate different topics, on occasion, I have been advised that to get something on an agenda, I would need a two-thirds vote. So a, four out of five of us to vote in favor of putting something on the agenda unless it was discussed in a business meeting tonight. So I just, in, in crossing Ts and dotting Is, what I wouldn't want to happen is you do this great work that, you know, you're doing and that we then are waiting until November because we didn't get consensus and a formal vote at a formal business meeting tonight.
So as far as putting it on the agenda for the business meeting, I, I don't personally have any problem with that. We just need to have all of our, the, the opinions back from the attorney, all the questions answered.
Love it. I think if we're not ready, we would, we would table it.
We can put it as a placeholder. We'll just put it as a placeholder for the 17th.
Love it.
For, for action. But we'll still have the update on the 3rd.
Yes.
That's where we are.
I just want to make sure we, if we need to do a formal vote tonight to get consensus to, to do what we need to do to make sure, even if it's, even if it ends up not being on there, to at least have that vote done, so it can be on there.
I don't, don't think we need a vote. We just need consensus. Yeah, we just, and we have consensus.
I'll give consensus, yeah.
We have consensus.
So we have consensus. Thank you.
Okay? All right, going now to old business. Anybody have old business? Okay, I don't hear any new business. Don't hear any new business. All right, we're back to public comment number 23, public comments. This can be on any agenda, any item at all. Opens the floor.
Your next speaker is Nicole Boris regarding inspiration.
Hopefully, did you register? Not you Nicole.
I don't know. Yeah, go ahead, back, as I'm saying, I didn't know if you both registered or how it's going.
All right, thank you, I'm sorry Nicole, go ahead.
Fine. Hi, my name's Nicole Boris. I just wanted to talk a little bit about how we should have a little bit of a creative approach to some of the challenges that our kids go through. And some of that I was thinking was bringing in people of inspiration, people of colorful, diverse backgrounds that, for inspiration, even with like the bullying. If we brought somebody in who stated that they were once a bully and the trouble it got them into and the things they went through and what they wished they would have avoided when they were younger, and maybe got some insight as to what would have helped them divert their attention and do other things, as well as people who struggle with mental illness and disabilities and so on and so forth, or, you know, all the above, addictions and people who have had problems with friends and in school and things like that. Just bringing people in for inspiration instead of just slideshows or informal type of things, getting a little bit more creative and bringing people of colorful backgrounds with inspirational overcoming stories. And so that's just what I wanted to say.
All right, thank you.
The next speaker is Daniel Skollin. I'm not sure on what the subject is.
Hello, Board members. My name is Daniel Skollin. I'm here to talk about wireless radiation in school system. I know you remember me from last time, and please, I'm not doing this to be a pain. I'm very, very happy that you two are here, because my appeal is to the both of you, but I'm going to hammer down the facts to you guys, okay? You talk about cancer prevention and I, and listen, I meant what I said last time. I really do think that you guys are genuinely interested in the health and safety and to run a, you know, a, a top-notch school system. Anyway, I'm going to read off some studies, some published PubMed-reviewed clinical studies. Surveys of people living near cell towers, antennas, France, Spain, Iraq, India, I'm going to go fast because there's a lot, several other countries, higher reports, found significantly higher reports of health issues, including sleep issues, fatigue, and headaches. Anthony B. Miller, Environmental, Journal of Environmental Research, radio frequency radiation emitted by cell towers, a review paper concludes based on evidence of our opinion IARC, that's the International Agency Research on Cancer. Current categorization of RFR, radio frequency radiation as a possible human carcinogen 2B, should be upgraded to carcinogenic, Group 1. World Health Organization now has it as a Class 2B carcinogen. Impact of radio frequency radiation, DNA damage, antioxidants, peripheral, peripheral blood lymphocytes of humans residing in vicinity of mobile phone base stations. Journal of Electromagnetic Biology and Medicine. This study evaluated human blood, human blood of the individuals living near a mobile phone base stations. The study found higher radio frequency radiation exposures and statistically significant differences in the blood of people living closer to the cellular antennas. Groups living closer to the antennas had statistically significantly higher frequency of mon, of micronuclei, that's a cancer biomarker. The effect of continuous low intensity exposure on electromagnetic fields from radio base stations, Journal of Environmental Research and Public Health conclusions, the balance of our results indicates the exposure of radio frequency electromagnetic fields from RBS increases the rate of mortality by all cancers, specifically breast, cervix, lung, esophageal cancers. I mean, you know, it's terrible that I only have three minutes to go through all these studies, because I have hundreds and hundreds of studies of how they're linking cell tower radiation to cancer. There are school systems all around the country, all around the world, who are limiting cell towers to within 1,500 feet, 500 feet, 300 meters from school. We have them on rimfire, FPC, across the street from Matanzas at Belterra Middle. I have teachers who want to speak up, who are afraid to speak up. I have some people in this room today that work for you guys who are afraid to speak up on the issue. There is something that can be done about all of this, about the fluorescent lights in school, about the wireless. My brother wired at the Pentagon, at NASA, at MacDill War Room. I wired for Allegiant Airlines. You guys can do it, I'm telling you. I know that the budget is tight, but $2,300 a month for a cell tower at FPC, they sold out the kids' health under Christie Gavin, 2009 October, and I don't mean to call you out, you were just with a sitting attorney then in 2009. Putting these kids in jeopardy for $2,300 a month.
I gotta stop you.
Can't even pay, can't even pay for one teacher.
Okay.
Go ahead.
I do remember you.
I know you.
And we can't respond. That's part of this process. However, Mr. Freeman is sitting in the back. Mr. Freeman and I and a couple other people have been addressing that issue, and I'd like him, you two to actually get together.
Okay, that would be great.
Fair enough.
That would be great.
Okay. All right, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you guys, thank you.
All right. Next.
Kathy Barnett, Principal.
Hello, 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 hello. I'm just going to read, because it's a little bit emotional for me, so I'm just going to read it, okay? I watched a press conference about the, after the unfortunate Bonnell incident. Ms. Moore asked if the community would give the district and her forgiveness for their error of whatever went down. I'm not here, okay. The experts and educators of our district made a mistake. Okay? According, oh, I'm going to just jump around. The autonomy of principals in Flagler County School raises concerns and leaves me worried about potential consequences. This decision raises questions about accountability and whether or not if it sets a precedent for similar situations. One would think that all Flagler schools should be held to the same consistent policy procedures. The district actions represent their true intentions. After COVID, some schools decided to welcome back students to campuses and participate, and others did not. This caused problems with, you know, the parents of the school. Other schools decided not to participate, which caused parents to complain. After, oh, there was also an event held at the Josh, oh, I'm sorry. Another school held the Josh Cruz ceremony, which the superintendent, many school board members, and parents all showed up while all the other campuses were closed down. Another example of rules only applied to a few. Last March, my child was engaged in a conversation with a friend in his classroom where both parties used a racial slur. I verified with the teacher, the dean, and he did not use the word to intimidate, bully, or in anger. I asked him if my child raised his voice, was his arms up, did he touch the child, harass the child, or hurt the child? Because I wanted to ensure that the incident that happened was not in anger. He made a poor choice, a judgment using the word. According to Flagler County School District Matrix, this word is considered a federally protected group, which makes this an automatic Level 3 offense. Three days out of school suspension, a parent-teacher conference, and a diversity assignment. The only punishment the school enforced was a suspension. When I went to go pick up my child, I asked to speak with the dean, the teacher, and the principal. The only person that came out to talk to me was the dean. We had a conversation and then I took my child home. One of the things that I had did as a parent was ask him to write an essay with regards to, I'm going to run out of time. All right. Fast forward to the end of the year activities, my son was told that he was suspended and could not participate in anything. My son wrote a letter to the principal asking for, they said that there, he could do an appeal. My son wrote a letter and he also attached the essay that I asked him to write. According to the principal, he sent out a generic email response to all the students with the same little message, "I'm sorry, you cannot attend." Do you want me to stop?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll come back. Just go in order?
Okay. All right. All right, who's next?
The next speaker is Shannon Rambo on general items. Ms. Rambo.
Shannon Rambo, Chapter Chair, Moms for Liberty, Flagler County. I want to thank you all for following the legislative bills that have recently been passed and being on top of all of that. I really appreciate it. With Moms for Liberty, I've been to Tallahassee multiple times. I've been in the room when they have passed some of these bills. So I really appreciate that you're following through, keeping up on all that. I really do appreciate it. And I also want to talk about the Guardian Program. We're not stopping with the Guardian Program. A lot of our local counties around us have the Guardian Program. I know some of you weren't against it, you felt we needed more information. I feel like we do too, but I don't want it to be forgotten, because many times at these meetings, we've discussed security, locking doors and not getting checked in, checked out. Where, where are we at with that? I would like to know, because I've never gotten a response as to what's being done about security to make sure our schools are safe. And I signed in, I would like a reply to this, and I don't want just a generic one that says, what do you want to know? I want to know what is being done, because it hasn't been brought up anymore, the security issues, and I think there are still issues. And the proclamations of the bullying and stuff, I think that's great. We sit here through all these and we clap and this and that, but what's really being done? I, I don't think there's, I don't really know what's being done. I haven't seen it. I still hear about fighting, I still hear about bullying, I still hear it's a problem. So what are we actually doing other than just making proclamations? So I'd like a few of those answers, otherwise, thank you. Looking forward to a great year.
All right, thank you.
Chanel Channing, free speech for public comment.
Yes, hi, Chanel Channing. I'm a social worker, so I'm a advocate as well. And I just want to say that, you know, we've been doing a debate back and forth whether or not we should have an open comment in the beginning of this meeting. And today is a perfect example why having things just on the agenda and whether or not people can speak only on the agenda in the beginning of the meeting just isn't working. Because it's not, this whole Bonnell thing being on the agenda, well, we're not seeing it. And so what happens is the people who do come to these meetings on a regular basis, they actually end up being silenced, because they know, well, if you don't see it on the agenda, we can't speak. So the other people come out of feeling something, the regular community comes with a burning heart saying, I want to speak on a matter, which is absolutely logical and appropriate for them to do so. And they come here, just like they would be allowed to be able to do in a city council meeting, and speak and speak first. And that's the way it should be. We are the community. We are the ones that voted you in, and we are the ones that need to have that first voice in the beginning. And so I'm like advocating for us to go back to that. The reason it was taken away in the beginning, as you know, is because that horrible incident, what, a couple years ago now? It's been tried to be controlled so we never have something like that again. Let's not live in fear of that. Let's bring back the open comment in the beginning. Let's let the community speak and speak their heart, speak to issues as they come up, so that when the community has an issue that happens, they feel like they can come here and speak about it and speak openly in the beginning of the meeting, because this is what's happening. These issues do happen, and we do get upset about it. And then those of us who do come on a regular basis, we know we can speak to, whether or not we can pile through there and see if we, it's on the agenda or not. And everybody's on the same level. We come, we speak to issues. And about this Benel thing, I do want to say, I think it's gotten out of hand. I think there are certain people who plan to run for office next time. People look around and see who's running next time for office and who's fanning the flames. And I hope you do look at it objectively, because, yeah, we don't need division, and we don't need people fanning division, and we know this is a good community we have. Thank you.
Thank you. And next?
Robin Openshaw, cell towers.
Hey, Robin Openshaw here. I'm a refugee to Florida from another state. I'm a co-founder of the first charter school in that state a really long time ago. And I'm sure I'm glad that I didn't have giant 5G cell towers that made my four children's ADHD worse, but it really does do that. I'm the author of 17 books, been really successful, so I can just live wherever I want to. I chose here, and I was so sad to see these cell towers, because I know that they're creating chaotic frequencies that, as Danny talked about, disrupt our children's ability to think. I don't even have children in the schools anymore, but they do, these chaotic frequencies, EMFs, ELFs, RFs. My friends who came here say that they picked this up, I don't think it was in this building, but this is being handed out all over town, and it's a whole article about EMFs, ELFs, radioactive frequencies, RFs. And it's selling you devices, because we have them in our homes, but we're putting them on our schools. Some schools have several of them. I assume it's because the schools are getting paid money, but it really exacerbates ADD and ADHD. It's, the schools that have had these cell towers on them that are seeing childhood cancers go through the roof, causes neurological problems. I think we have enough behavior disorders in our kids, you know? And so I think if the buck doesn't stop here, it's just not gonna stop. Like, we have to look to you to stand up to telecom. And where I come from, the parents were really upset about it, because they've been there long enough that we can actually see the results, and we see the leukemias 10Xing in elementary schools. And when we try to stand up to it, they're just like, "Well, there's nothing we can do. The contract is signed with telecom." But I've done a lot of research on this. My 17th book is called Vibe. It's about the vibrational frequency of everything. Simon and Schuster told me, "We don't want two woos, no woo-woo, we just want one woo." So I wrote a one-woo book about the actual science of what happens in human beings and all living things when our healthy frequencies, our electromagnetic frequencies are disrupted by, I mean, geez, my kids didn't even have 3G when they were going through school, and now we're gonna expose these kids to 5G. Did you know that the country of France has banned the iPhone 12 because the radiation is so excessive? So, and we're gonna put all these cellphone towers. I drove past one on the way here. Danny had told me about it. I hadn't, I hadn't seen it, but when I moved into my house, I have a cellphone tower .2 miles from my house, and I have tinnitus all the time now. I've never had tinnitus in my life. I eat everything organic, I do all the right things, I exercise every day, but I have this cellphone tower making my head ring. So I hope we don't do that to our kids, but I see that we are, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Claudette O'Dowd regarding multiple items.
Good evening. Thank you for listening. My name's Claudette O'Dowd, and a few things I just wanted to bring up. I definitely think we need to stay on the Guardian program, and if we're not feeling secure about it yet, we need to look further into more information that'll make everyone feel more comfortable, more secure. You know, if anybody's gonna want to shoot up a school, and they know that there's protection there, they're least likely to do it, because they know that they're not gonna make it through the front door. So that's a fact on that. And I wanted to talk about also lack of teachers. So a lot of people say it's, you know, the pay, like, they want more pay, which they deserve. But I just find it interesting that in my kids' private, private school, you know, they may need a teacher or two here and there, but those teachers don't get paid as much as public school, and they all seem really happy there. Like, the kids are so well, like, grounded, my kids are thriving. My daughter has nine kids in her class, she's seventh grade. All of middle school up to ninth grade, they go up to ninth grade now, they're looking to add each additional year. There's like 20, about 23 students. So I know that public school, there's a lot more children, but what that tells me is we need more aides maybe in these classrooms, because I was told, I believe it's about 15 or more children, they get an aide in their school. So it's just something to look into and consider, like, maybe asking how these schools that are running their tight ship very well. I mean, hey, it doesn't hurt to ask them, because I think it could help in public school as well. And I wanted to also talk about the bullying, that program that I heard earlier sounds amazing for mental health, that's great. And not only also bringing in bullies that used to bully that are now, you know, recovered from being that way, but also people who have been bullied. I'm a survivor of that, and I think it would be great to even bring people like that in who have survived such extreme bullying and have been able to make it past all of that. I'm very fortunate that I'm alive today, because of the amount of bullying I went through. So I appreciate you listening. Thank you very much, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Elizabeth Diaz on multiple issues, I guess.
Good evening, Chair Masaro, Superintendent Moore, and distinguished board members. I want to first congratulate Ms. Moore. Thank you for taking on the monumental task of being superintendent of Flagler County Schools. Today, I stand before you with a profound sense of pride and accomplishment of our union negotiations and the procedures that shape our educational foundations and institutions. These procedures have not only ensured the continued growth and excellence of Flagler County Schools, but have also demonstrated our unwavering commitment to the betterment of the workforce and the lives of our students. The last time I spoke, I made comments about public perception. I do want to apologize to our board members if they felt it was directed at them and if you're feeling targeted. Unfortunately, it is part of the job, and I have learned to take, not take things personally. I do want to share an invitation, or extend an invitation again, to meet with me personally and with the members of our executive board for the union, for FCA. We do share the same interests, do what's right for students, and get to yes. In recent observations and the obstacles we face in Flagler County, I see you, and you are working collaboratively, and you are working to better Flagler, to move Flagler forward. And as we move forward, let's continue to uphold those principles of effective negotiations, always with the best interests of our students at heart, and together we will ensure that the schools remain a beacon of hope, learning, and opportunity for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Eddie Lang regarding general topics.
Superintendent, Chair Masaro, and the rest of the board and the student board, welcome. Actually, you know, I want to talk about the proclamations that we did today, and I think one of the other members of the public brought it up, the bullying. So it's kind of ironic that you have the disability awareness the first two weeks and bullying in the same month, because chances are, a son like mine will get bullied. The statistics show that he will get bullied. He's nonverbal right now. And, you know, kids are cruel sometimes. So I'd like to see something be done, too, because we talk about it, we'll wear orange probably one day in October, and we'll say that we, you know, we're against bullying. But I think there's got to be some more education, maybe assemblies, you know, something to that matter to these students, where they're understanding, you know, there are differences. Kids are different, and especially kids with disabilities, which obviously is closer to me than anything else. But, you know, it's disheartening, because I don't, you know, as my son progresses through Flagler schools, I plan on being here for the long haul, and he'll go through Trails probably and all the programs. You know, I worry every day, every day when he's in class, you know, and honestly, you know, and I'm not gonna point any fingers, but sometimes I feel even, and I might regret saying this, but even gen ed teachers who don't deal with our students on a regular basis, I'm not gonna say they bully, but we get the eye rolls, we get the, you know, understand that ESE parents and even teachers in Paris, they notice these things, because we have a different mindset when it comes to taking care of our kids. And sometimes I think gen ed, you know, I know they didn't choose to teach ESE, but maybe they're interacting with some of our ESE kids. The eye rolls are there, and that's, you know, it's kind of a sense of bullying, because my kid deserves the same treatment as everybody else. Like I said, you know, it's kind of ironic that those two things are kind of coinciding, and I believe we need to do more to prevent the bullying. I mean, it's disheartening, because I don't know if you're aware, and I don't know if Indian Trails is aware, but, I mean, recently somebody posted some Instagrams of ITMS fights. There's some crazy fights that happen at ITMS, and it's ridiculous. And I don't know what we're doing about it, but these guys are posting these videos of these fights. And it's like World War II, III, IV. And if, and somebody, I don't even know how I found it. Somebody just posted on Facebook, and I was like, "No, it can't be." And sure enough, there was a bunch of them, there's a bunch of Instagrams out there. And you could see the kids' faces and everything. So, I mean, these are, these are things that need to be discussed. And like I said, the bullying is, with the ESE, it's just very difficult, because I don't want my son to be bullied. It might happen, but I just think we need to teach kids at a younger age, especially elementary school, so as they grow and they go to middle school with the same students, they won't be tended to bully them, because they'll know these kids, they'll understand where, how they are, and, you know, and they'll have that compassion for them. I was here at April, you know, last April with the autism awareness, and we discussed, well, after you guys forgot the proclamation, but it's okay, I forgive you. But after that proclamation, you know, go to these schools with the ESE parents and the disabilities and Trails, and go, just go look at the staff. You have such a great staff here in Flagler. We have, I mean, you know, Mr. Fury comes to our EPAC meetings, and, you know, he sees our concerns, and he listens, but we have such a great staff in Flagler for our ESE kids. And they deserve a round of applause, they deserve everything they get, because it's not an easy job. I have one child that's ESE. Trust me, it's hard.
I gotta stop you, but thank you.
Okay.
We get it. Thank you.
Thanks, Eddie.
Chair Masaro, in accordance with the board rules, that concludes our public comment. Ms. Barnett did sign up again, but on the same topic, and you are only afforded three minutes per topic, so I leave it to the board.
Okay, wait a second. Ms. Barnett, I will let you go. Ms. Barnett, would you like to finish your story? Please come up. I know you weren't exactly all together when you got here and wasted a little time. No, that's okay. We want to hear you.
I didn't want to do this at all.
I got you.
Okay, I'm just gonna just start off where I left off. I just wanted to say, basically, after the punishment, and it goes back to forgiveness, you know, here we are, a county which you guys are saying that you are in the best interest of the child. My child paid the price, and nobody was there for him. So basically, at the end, I spoke to the principal, I have spoken to Mr. Finale, which is supposedly the coordinator for student support. So I was wondering how he supported my son. He just told me that, basically, everything goes back to the principal, he has the right to do and fit, chooses what he would like to do. So basically, I wanted to just end that by saying that I met with Ms. Moore, I made the appointment and came in and talked to her, and I sent a letter to everybody on the board. No one responded to me, I only had one person that did call to make sure I was okay. Apparently, you guys can't respond. I don't know what that, I don't know what that was about, but nobody responded to me. I, basically, as a parent in Flagler County, I tried everything, I possibly followed the command, and nobody was able to help. So I guess I just wanted to say that the same situation sounds like it happened over Benel. We have, the principals are doing stuff, and I think it was great that she was trying to think outside of the box, but if we all had consistency, where you guys would say, "Okay, we want to try something different at this school," and everybody sits together and has a conversation before expediting it and playing it out in real life, and then accidents happen like what happened at Benel. And I'm not privy to all that information, I'm just saying, as an outsider looking in, no one, it seems like you guys surround your staff and your people, but what about the children? He made a mistake, he paid the price, and then the principal continued to add on more and more consequences. So I just wanted to say that that was a problem, and I know there's no recourse now, but now that maybe if I came up here and talked to her, maybe other parents would hear and feel whatever and talk about it, and let you guys know that, I don't know, what happened was no good.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Conther.
I appreciate this last three minutes. My passion is high, I'm unapologetic about that, and I just want to finish while my heart is still burning. I want to talk about Flagler's Coordinator of Communications, how this story seemed to get out all over the country in no time. Let me reveal to you how, who he is likely communicating with. He's likely communicating with GLAD, Gay Lesbian Association Against Defamation. How else could he get a small, non-issue story to appear in CNN and in the CBS Morning News? He's likely communicating with the Southern Poverty Law Center, a radical left-wing group who misnamed Moms for Liberty a hate group. We've heard from him tonight. They called them a hate group. That's who he's probably communicating with. Why? Because they will not turn a blind eye to homosexual politicians and their perverted policies. He is likely communicating with Equality Florida, ACLU, I know it makes some people uncomfortable, Human Rights Campaign, and the pro-gay NAACP. These are homosexual political organizations and their allies who cannot survive without pimping the black community. That's just the truth. It was the truth when I was gay. It's the truth now. They can't survive without pimping the black church. And I'm sorry to say that I believe they're doing the same to our new superintendent. Why would you, some people may be asking, are they doing this? Why would they do this? Why would they make up this crisis? So that's what they've done. Not because they give a hoot about black children, but rather because fabricating a race problem makes it look as though the gay community is running to the black community's They want five minutes of fame, and then they want you to remember that when it's time for the vote again. Five minutes of fame, and they want to scare all other administrators and teachers into obedience for their upcoming wicked policy changes that'll be coming soon if we don't keep control. And so again, Mrs. Everson, Mr. Hines, I want you to know, no weapon formed against you or me shall prosper, and every tongue that has lied on you and me is already condemned.
Thank you. All right. Any more?
That concludes public comment.
Okay. All right, now we're going on to closing comments, closing comments. Gentlemen, at the end of every meeting, both of you, at the end of every meeting, we have closing comments. You are welcome to speak freely about any topic we discussed or anything you'd like to say, but mostly update what's going on at your schools. So Stanley, you want to go first, and then we'll put Brandon, he's at the end, that's the only reason I picked him, Bryn. All right, Stanley, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. Firstly, I'd like to thank Ms. Bozeman and Matanzas for giving me the opportunity to be up here, and I'd also like to thank the school board for facilitating a positive environment for me to be here. I don't, I didn't really come prepared to say anything about Matanzas, but it's truly an honor to be up here, and I'd like to, I've, Brendan's a great friend of mine, we've been friends for eight years, we met in the Flagler Youth Orchestra, and I'm happy to be up here with him, and I'm looking forward to the rest of the school year. Thank you.
Brandon.
Thank you. Kind of on the same vein of thoughts, Stanley, I would really like to thank everyone here, whether in the audience or whether on the school board, and kind of our county in general for having such an opportunity for us as students to represent our schools and have this valuable experience as we go on into our lives. this valuable experience as we go on into our lives. And it's just such a privilege to have this experience while we're still in high school so that we are better prepared for the future. And just to quickly talk about some of, or one of the upcoming events that FPC is helping host, I would like to mention the Banel Block Party, hosted collaboratively by FPC, BTMS, and Banel Elementary School, which will take place at the George Washington Carver Community Center from 4:30 to 6:00 PM on Wednesday, September 27th. This is an event that we aim to help celebrate our students in their achievements, as well as help provide resources for those who may not be on track or who may be struggling. We want to help come gather together as a community to help all students, and just have a positive environment for them to succeed. And switching gears, I would also like to quickly kind of publicly recognize our FPC football team for last Friday at the potato bowl beating Metanzas 29 to 8.
Yep.
We sunk that ship, and we're pretty proud of it.
[laughing]
And lastly, I just want to shine a quick spotlight on two phenomenal educators we have at Flagler Palm Coast, Flagler Palm Coast High School. Two of these educators have been nominated and have received the Yale Educator Award for being such outstanding educators. Mr. Warren, a mathematics teacher and a Mothra Data sponsor alongside Mr. DiAgostino, our school's IB, AP, and dual enrollment counselor, have been recognized for dedication to students and their success from Yale University. We're very proud of this achievement and very happy for our educators. In closing, I'd like to extend again my thanks to everyone in attendance, everyone who has helped facilitate this movement, and I cannot wait to see what this year holds with Stanley. Thank you.
Ms. John.
I don't have too many comments tonight, but I will just speak to the 5G towers, because I know a lot of people have reached out to us about it, and it's something I need to learn more about. I feel like it's something I can't escape. I had a cell tower outside my last home, and there's one down the road from our new home, so they are just everywhere, but I think it's a conversation we need to have and just investigate a little bit more, because it's a concern in our community. So, hopefully, we can get together with the district staff and talk about that some more. As far as just a little Banel Elementary, I'm sad to lose any educators, because we know our children need them. It doesn't help when we lose teachers, because it doesn't help our children. And I'm a believer in forgiveness, but I'm also going to trust our superintendent and district staff to make the right decisions for the future of the schools. So, that's pretty much it. Thank you, and I hope everybody has a good week.
Mr. Ferry.
Yes, I just want to first welcome our new student school board members, Stanley and Brandon, and I see you have achieved a lot, and I know that in this new role, I'm sure you're going to achieve even more. So, I look forward to working with both of you. And in regards to our proclamations tonight and some of the conversation to bullying, I mean, this is definitely an ongoing problem. It's been a problem since I was a kid, and it is something that I think none of us want to see our children be bullied. And the, but this is, this is an effort that, that we need to work on together. I believe that this starts at home. It starts at home with having a conversation with your children, having conversations within the community about bullying. We have our role too as a school, and unfortunately, oftentimes, it turns out to be disciplined. But I'd like to be more proactive with that as a district as well, as much as we can, but it's a team effort. So, I'm just asking parents and guardians and the community to partner with us on this matter, so that we can stamp out bullying in our schools and in our community. And in reference to breast cancer awareness, this, this one is something that really is near and dear. My mother is a survivor of breast cancer, and I will tell you that there's no question in my mind that it's early detection that is the reason why she's alive today. So, I encourage us as a community to encourage each other to get these tests regularly so that we, because it's, it's, there's, the statistics now are high that you will survive it if you detect it early. So, I just encourage others to do the same. And in regards to the potato bowl, I had a wonderful time at the potato bowl, it's my first one, and I do want to congratulate FPC and Ms. Bozeman. You know, I came in black, right? I have two kids in Indian Trails that are going to be future Pirates one day, so we came to support both teams, but FPC came, played hard, and they earned our victory. So, congratulations to them, and good night.
Ms. Hunt.
I unfortunately had to miss the potato bowl. We were celebrating my daughter's 12th birthday, and so that was a decision. We had a Stranger Things marathon planned. You can judge me all you want, she's 12, we watched Stranger Things. My choice. Just a few things tonight. Clarification, Brendan, Brendan, Brendan and Stanley, welcome. So excited to hear your voice on the board. And so, I think I said welcome. I'm a little tired. I don't know if everybody's aware, by the time we get to this point in the evening, we're all a little bit exhausted. So, a little grace would be appreciated. I'm speaking for everybody. I'm exhausted. I don't know about you guys. I want to speak to, someone brought up that there are potentially teachers, you know, who don't feel comfortable sharing, you know, if they don't feel safe, or. I, as one board member, would like to say, and this kind of goes, actually, I'm going to say two different comments together, so let me tie it together. I'd like to, all of us, to give LaShaka Moore some time. She is so talented, positive, focused, brilliant. There are so many great things in this district, so many. There's also been some dysfunction, and she and I had a conversation the other day, and I was coming at her with innovation, and, you know, we need to do this, and she reminded me that there's some work to be done. And so, I will say to some of the speakers, please continue to keep us on our toes. I, you know, please continue to remind us that we need to have conversations about bullying, that we need to talk about what are the steps that we, what do we need to talk about to revisit the Guardian program? I mean, I appreciate you guys keeping us focused on those things. But I just wanted to mention, again, to give Superintendent Moore a little bit of time also, because she is just starting with us, essentially, and she's got a lot of work to do, but I'm, I have all of my trust in her, that she will get us there. And so, I guess I'm going to go then back to the communication conversation. I think probably, at least something that I've heard, is there's a chance that open communication and trust have been maybe sometimes an issue. And so, I just want to put it out there, that I would hope going forward, our instructional and non-instructional staff would feel comfortable openly communicating any concerns, certainly around their safety. So, just a reminder, we've got a new leader, I have every trust in her, and I would hope that we all move forward in kind of this open and positive environment. Just make sure I'm covering everything. Yes, and my fourth star was to wish you all good night. Thank you.
Couple things. I started in this district as a bulldog, and now I am a pirate. So, I always find myself split come the potato bowl. And I realize that most of you are probably just laughing and think that's pretty silly, but it's a real thing. I actually bought my black shirt for blackout, and then I couldn't go. Something came in my schedule, it was killing me, but I was unable to be there. But, on a high note, FPC, congratulations. But each year, they're getting closer and closer in score. So, expect in the future, the 4,000 fans that were there, I would say within next, maybe not next year, but two years from now, Metanzas will get the potato bowl. That's my prediction. Okay? All right. Let's talk about something that happened tonight, which probably went very quickly and didn't realize, but it's very, very big news, and that is, we passed and agreed to both contracts in the district. Our educational contract, as well as our support staff contracts, were just passed. That is huge news at this time of the year to get those contracts done. I would like to thank leadership on both sides, representation from the school district, because it's not an easy task, but they did a great job, and I just want to thank everybody for that. That will make life a lot easier for Superintendent to be. All right. I also want to explain something about our interim superintendent. Ms. Moore has been voted in to become the superintendent, but we still have not signed a contract. And until that time, we actually sit down and get that contract signed, she's still our interim superintendent. Hopefully, we expect to have this done so we can vote on it at our night meeting in October, October 17th. So, between now and then, we are going to get together, we're going to negotiate the terms of her contract, we're all happy, and we can all move along. But that would be the official start for Ms. Moore to be officially our superintendent. Okay? That takes care of that. Was it Brandon and, it's Brendan and Stanley, thank you. I look forward to working with you. Like I said, I've worked with a lot of girls since I've been here, so it's nice to have a couple guys to bounce things off of. And you will get emails from me about the virtual teen town halls soon, and we'll work together and I'll get it all out for you. So, welcome. Look forward to having you here. All right? And that's about it. I'm going to wrap that up. I'd like to thank everybody for their comments tonight. It does matter. Even though we don't respond, don't you think we're not thinking about what you're saying? We are. I mean, many of us are probably going to go home tonight and think, wow, that's a good point, or I should have thought about that. It is important what you have to say. And Ms. Hunt's correct, it keeps us on our tail. We need to know what we're doing, it keeps us going. And you're right, we don't want to let the Guardian program die. And we've just been so busy with everything else, and there's always such a thing going on, it kind of got buried below, but we'll bring it back. It's got to come back, because we're not done with it yet, we know that. So, again, thank you, audience, for taking time to come here and speak with us. All right, Ms. Moore, it's all yours.
Happy 27th day of school. I know some of us are thinking it must, I'm feeling like it's been longer than 27 days, but today is the 27th day of school. I want to take an opportunity to thank Ms. Diaz and Mr. Hudson and our district team for all of their hard work in order to continue to come to the table in a collaborative way, in order to ensure that our instructional and non-instructional staff members have a contract that give them the best working conditions that we can provide. So, thank you very much. A lot about the potato bowl, but if you do not know, on tomorrow night at 6:00 PM, FPC and Metanzas will face off again, and it's not called the potato bowl, but they will do that in volleyball, and that's at 6:00 PM and 7:00 PM. Come out and support our students with that.
Where?
It's at FPC. FPC, 6:00 PM and 7:00 PM. I do want to welcome our student board members, cannot wait to see all the great things that you do, really proud of all of what you have already accomplished, and I know great things are in store for us. I do want to mention that we will be having our block party that will focus on schools Banel, Buddy Taylor, and FPC. We will be having a similar event on the north side of our county as well, for those of us who may go to school on the north side. This block party is really an opportunity to celebrate our students, as well as provide resources to our families. Our students will come, we will celebrate them, we will provide them with different resources that they need in order to be successful. We will also have many community vendors there that will be able to answer questions for families. We will also have several district representatives there that will be able to help our families. So, if you have questions about food service, or you want to speak to a guidance counselor, or you have questions about a schedule, or you need access to Skyward, the block party is an opportunity for you to do that, and so we ask that you come and be a part of that. After the block party, we will be having the community forum that is going to also be at the Carver Center. One of the things that I did ask after this incident with Banel, is that our community comes together and let's have conversations around not just that situation, but around what is it that our community is wanting and want to see happen in our schools? So, I invite our entire community to be there. I do know, and I'm not naive to the fact, that there will be people there that will have opposing views to maybe my thoughts, opposing views to maybe even thoughts of other community members, but it's important that we demonstrate that we can come together and have productive discourse around education in Flagler County. That is important. I cannot do it without those of you who are here, those of you who are listening, and those who are not even paying attention right now. We got to come together. The education of our students is not just a responsibility of our board, but it is the responsibility of a community, and so we have to come together and play your part. You know, I am speaking to our organization a lot about staying in our lane, and that is so important. We are educators, and so when our educators stand before our students, we want them standing before them as educators. They're not standing before them as parents. They're not standing before them in so many other different ways. We have to make room for our educators to be educators. We have to make room for our mental health counselors to be mental health counselors. But that is not the expectation of our teachers, right? And so, we talk a lot about staying in our lane, and we need you, we need you as a community to come together to be able to provide services that we as a school district cannot provide. So, that forum will be 6:00 PM at the Carver Center. I do ask that you come. The only thing that you need to bring with you is really an open mind to have a conversation as a community. We will be having that. I talk a lot about Flagler Forward, and Flagler Forward is about, for me, not only providing this district with structures in order to help us be successful, but Flagler Forward, for me, is about giving this community that I love and have lived in for a number of years, a school district that they can be proud of, that you can be proud of. And so, in order for me to do that, I need your help, I need you to continue to come to these meetings. You're also welcome to always email me, I do respond. And so, I look forward to all that we're going to do together as a community around Flagler Forward. Thank you, and have a good night.
All right. With that being said, I'm going to officially adjourn this meeting.